Good morning, it's nine o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to November twenty second, twenty-two and two, work session of Limestone County Commission. Ellen, do we have your public comment?
Yes, Bethany Shotney.
If you don't mind, Bethany, step up here, please.
Bethany Shotney with Limestone County Economic Development. And I just am coming to y'all talking, wanted to say a few words about a potential negotiation that we will have on the Clyde Mayberry Street Athens Commercial Park property. We have a new company, Scout Pest Control. They're actually not a new company, but they'll be new locating here in Athens. They have, have an interest in a couple of acres in that Athens Commercial Park out there, and they're wanting to move over here so they can expand. They currently have about sixteen employees, and they're going to, they foresee as much as possible, tripling those numbers with their business, and they really want to be in Athens, and so we would love to facilitate helping them get about a five thousand square foot facility built there on that, in that park area, which fits, fits kind of the service type businesses that we'd like to have in there. Is it, any questions?
That's it.
While you stand up there, Derek, Mr. Gatlin, I know you're new here, but the deal is, Bethany is the Economic Development Director, but she also is our, she does our real estate that us and the city owns together. Us and the city owns some property together in two or three places, in two or three odd deals, and if we ever sell a piece of property, she does the real estate portion of it, so.
Kind of serves as a liaison between the potential owner and y'all. I mean, I can't get all into the real estate thing, but Monday, the city approved this already for their, on their behalf, and so Mr. Jared Toon, if, if he's here, just to give a word of.
Yeah.
Confidence about his business.
We're a growing company. We've been here since 2013. We're growing every year, and we're getting to the point where we have to have our own space, where we can have a larger space, and that'll help facilitate our growth. I live here in Athens, and very much want to keep our business here in Athens, but as we've looked around for facilities that would work, or even land its own correctly, it's really hard to find without going to Decatur or Huntsville, and I'd much prefer to stay here.
So we're really excited about their investment. It's probably about a half a million dollar investment on the front end, and then plus as they grow their employees. Good paying jobs. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Bethany. We appreciate you.
Commissioner Gatlin, I was wanting you to be aware of the situation.
Thank you, sir.
And I can go ahead and just make a statement then about, so y'all also will be talking a little bit today, finalizing some of the information we have on a grant potential with ADECA and the ARC for sewer improvements out at Prior Field. We have one burden in hand on the project out there right now that this will serve, and then we also know that there are some others that are highly interested in the area for development for aerospace and aviation related programs. So this is finalizing the approval for match money for the grant, four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars requested from all four entities, Limestone, Athens City, Decatur City, and Morgan County, who are all partners in the, in Prior Field, and so Limestone County is the final one that needs to get the, dot the i's and cross the t's, but also Limestone County will be serving as fiscal agent for the whole project.
Okay. Thank you, Bethany.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, moving on, we'll have a, on here, we'll have the minutes from November the seventh into the sixteenth, both. Anybody got any discussion with any of the minutes? And the, and moving on, the next one, the claims, we have claimed amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. Anybody got any discussion or problems with the claim being paid? All right, resolutions, we had no public hearings, no resolutions, no orders. Contracts, agreements, and grants. We have one on here, which will be to approve and to enter into a membership agreement with Air Med Care Network in order to allow Ed Met, Ed Met Care Network to provide county employees an option to obtain Air Med Care Network services, and they had a, somebody came in earlier in the year and spoke with us about this, and this is just a service that we'll offer as a benefit to our employees. They can pay a membership fee to it. But anybody got any discussion with that?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is a good, good thing for our employees. It's, it's definitely a, a service that needs to be insured, because anytime you have a, I don't know what their criteria is to call Air Med out nowadays, but seems like they're always in the air here lately, but I think it's a good thing for our employees.
Thank you, Commissioner Sammet. Anybody got anything else?
Now, Daryl's right, I mean, this, they got a shop here, here in Athens now full time, and it's a lot more flights than we used to have, and those bills are, depending if they fly out of Athens or hunt for the care, those bills range, you know, can range from the low forties on up, you know, seventy-five hundred thousand, so, you know, the insurance, a lot of our folks in the field have had it for years, and for, for what it is per household, it's just really, I mean, a no brainer, something I'd encourage everybody to participate in.
Oh, at these rates, there's no way.
Hope you never need it, but you know, if you're in a car wreck, you know, sometimes you're not able to say, well, I don't want to be flown. They may fly you based on your criteria, then you know, the bill kind of lies between you and your insurance company, so.
That's right. And a lot of times, insurance companies don't pay these bills, and that's why, I mean, it is a good service. Thank, thank Commissioner Gatlin. Any anything else before we move on? Budget revisions, we have one budget revision, and be for District One, it'll be to remove seventy-five hundred dollars for, for septic tank repair up at the commission shed.
Yeah, that's for District One, the septic system there, the shed. That old shed was put on property that had an old house, and evidently in nineteen forty-three or whenever it was, they put the shed up there, they just tied into that old tank, and it's broken up, and we tried to do something with it back in the nineties, put new field lines and stuff to make it work, but it's done to the point, it can't be anything done. So that's what this is, is to put us a new tank in, and probably grinder pumps, and, and make it work.
I know we've been fighting it for a long time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's been a problem for a long time. That's what it's about, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Any more discussion? All right, moving on, number two on here will be to approve an appropriation in amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-five cents to be applied to the CDBG grant, and this right money is for the development of wastewater systems improvement to Prior Field at the regional airport, and just kind of give a little history of this. This is a, the Prior Field is owned by us, Morgan County, Limestone County, I mean, City of Athens, and the city of Decatur, four entities on it, and we all asked for a little over a hundred and nineteen thousand apiece. We have a fund that's through Economic Development, and Bethany has split the cost with us and the city, so we're actually paying a fourth of the half, of our mayor's and city's half, so half of it came through that, and then we're paying a fourth, and the city's paying a fourth, and Economic Development paying a half, so, of our half, so. A half of a half of a half. So there we go.
A lot of dollars.
So that's how that all come around, and this grant here is through the ADECA program, and being that it's out in unincorporated portions of Limestone County, and it's in a, in the Decatur, if it's in Decatur, it's an entitlement city, they wouldn't be eligible, but this is a real good project for the area to develop the sewer around the airport and the college area there, so. So that's what this is all about, so. Any got any discussion with it? I know we've talked about it, we have actually already approved, being the fiscal agent and stuff like that for it, so. All right, moving on, merchant purchases, we have none. Board appointments, we have none. Award bids, we have none. Personnel action, if y'all don't have an issue with this, I've read this over here, these are both the same position, same start date and everything, y'all just take both of these in one motion today, when we go to the commission meeting?
They fine.
I mean, all the, really spad both names together and just take it all in one motion, unless anybody has an issue with one of the other names. It'll be to approve to hire Kobe Ramsey and Curtis Boyd as corrections officers effective December the fifth of twenty twenty-two, pending a drug screening, and if anybody, like I said, nobody has any issue with it, take it up one motion, make it acceptable. Anybody got any issue with either one of them? If we do, we'll break them in part, so. All right, nobody has an issue with that, and thank them for coming here to work with us. Merit increases, we have several listed below. Does anybody have any issue with anybody on the merit increase? If not, we'll move on to the next page, which is engineers report, and we have several subdivisions on here, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have several subdivisions, so I'll just get into those. We have New Garden Road subdivision east, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating three lots in District One. We have New Garden Road subdivision west, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating three lots in District One. We have Clements Height subdivision replat of Lot Three, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District Four. Kelly Place subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District One. Heath Clem Farm subdivision, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating two lots in District One. Baker subdivision as a minor for preliminary and final, creating one lot in District One. Hubbard Landing, this is a minor for preliminary and final, creating four lots in District One, and then Greek, Green Cove subdivision, it's a replat of Arts Corner Lots Seven through Eleven. This is a major for a final approval. It creates twenty-two lots in District Two. So that's all that I have for your consideration on subdivisions. If you have any questions.
Anybody have any issue with any subdivision or any conversation with it?
Okay. As a way of update, our paving crew is kind of knocking out a few last, end of year projects. Have a few things here and there, just small projects, so they're actually currently in District One for the remainder of this working week, and then first part of next week, another small project in District One. So there, so like I said, we're just kind of wrapping up. This is the week of, first week of, full week of December, we have Cow and Equipment, who will come in and do some maintenance on our milling machine and paver, so machines will be down that, that week, but this is just an annual maintenance, just to try to keep everything in good shape for next year. They'll come in and replace all the wear parts and check everything out, make sure it's in factor tolerances, so. So it, we, we entered into a service contract or agreement with them back when we purchased the equipment, to, to make sure that we, we can kind of keep this equipment in good shape, so. They're doing that the first full week of December, so. And that's really all I have for you guys right now.
All right. Anybody got any issues or talk, conversation about?
And I think that service agreement was a good thing with the equipment. That was a, when we done that, I think.
Mark, can I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, you may.
South side of New Garden Road, east of Elkton Road, how's that description?
I, to me, I didn't even look at the description. I have to go back, and I can, I can get you an answer for it pretty quick, but I didn't even look at the description, I apologize.
I know New Garden Road don't run east of Elkton Road, so.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll have to take a look at that. It may have just been a misbrand.
They just didn't gee-haw there.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand when I'm looking at it, but.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get you an answer in the, in our fifteen minute recess.
Appreciate it.
All right. Anybody got any other discussion? All right, other business, the first item on here, Eddie had called me before the meeting and said that he didn't have the Limestone County Emergency Operations Plan all quite complete, so we're going to strike number one off of the agenda for today, so. Number one will be struck off until next meeting. All right, number two, we'll be contended on the rest of this, and we'll start here with this one, will be to approve, establish a solid waste collection service, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mark. Mark has worked on this project, him and the attorney, and we'll let them go through the.
So we've kind of reached the point where a decision has to be made. This item number two, depending on how you decide to go with item number two, will determine how you vote on items number three through seven. So we, we have been notified by our current collection service that, that they're essentially retiring and, and leaving the business, and so we have to, we have to make a decision if we want to proceed with contract collection, or do we want to enter into county collection, into a county collection service, so where we would, we would create the department and begin collection on a county, on a unincorporated countywide basis. So that's kind of option, that's, that's item two, so, so when we get to the meeting, I believe you'd have to make a motion on which direction you want, which way you want to go. So I'll give you some kind of background information to give you some thought, to give you something to think about. I know we've been talking about all these options a lot over the last several weeks. We have a few contract haulers that are interested in our contract. We've met with, with a couple different ones. What we, the feeling that, that we get, for the most part, is that, that our contract price is, is lower than what it would take for us to be able to continue, to continue collecting the same rate and continue to, and to have a contract garbage hauler. There is one company that is, would be a, a new company to the business, they're not currently in business. They believe that they could do the service, and at least for the immediate future, for the immediate future, keep, be able to keep the rate the same, but, but of course, they're, they're new business, they'll have to kind of figure a few things out as they go, so. So that's kind of where we are on the, the contract side. I think that there were, there've been some options of, kind of thrown around, of extending the current contract, and then the current hauler possibly selling their, their business to the new contractor, but that new, that we'd met with, with one of the potential contractors, and, and they, they really stressed to us, I think, that there would have to be some kind of an increase still to be able, for them to be able to continue the business, so. So that's, that's one of those things that, that we have to keep in mind. I mean, we did, we did just raise rates to try to cover the inflation of the service as it is, and we'd be put in a position where we'd have to raise rates again, and, and that, that may be the case no matter, no matter what. But it's, but I, we, the chairman did ask me to go through the exercise and find out, is it even a possibility for us to take on garbage collection? So what Ellen gave you is kind of a, a proposal plan, how we could possibly take that on So if we were to take it on ourselves, first we would have to, this, this is me going through the items that are left. First, we'd have to establish a department. You have to have a cost center within the county to, to handle all of the purchases and leases that would be taken care of, so we'd have to establish the department. And once we do that, then we have to get our, we have to get our equipment, and the way we would approach it would be through automatic sideload, because, just because of the, the labor issues, to have labor, to have three people on a truck is going to be hard for, for anybody to be able to have that. So if we did automatic sideloaders, you could have one, one driver per truck, they'd go to the house, and, and it's that, that can, where we would supply the cans. So our costs for, for trucks would be approximately three point three million dollars. Cans, we would have to purchase around twenty-six thousand cans to put out at houses. These are the ninety-five gallon automatic sideload cans, like what you see inside the city limits. They'd be about one point seven million dollars. So item, item three, or item four on there would be to seek financing, so we would, we would have to seek financing. I have those amateurized over five years, so I would estimate, so, and I've got that, my estimates based on, based on a six percent interest rate. Typically, we get, as a county, we get lower than market interest rates, but we, but I've got it kind of set at kind of the market interest rate right now, at six percent, just for estimating purposes. So we'd have about a seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar a year payment to pay those, to pay those loans back over five years amateurized. I also have employees, employee costs of a little over a million dollars a year, and employee costs, that's counting forty percent overhead rate, that's our, that's all of the, the employee taxes and benefits and things like that that we provide. We have a, a little less than a forty percent overhead rate, so for every hour. I also estimated all of our hourly rates, kind of the middle of the pay scale that I think that they would be on, so this should be, so as, as people come and go, ultimately you'll get a mix of some people on the high end, some people on the low end. I'm trying to, I tried to come up with some realistic, realistic expectations of what our costs may be, so, and then I, like I said, I added a forty percent overhead rate to that. Then I estimated fuel at about six dollars a gallon for the trucks, maintenance, tipping fees, workers' compensation, property insurance, office shop space, miscellaneous, other miscellaneous operating expenses, and then also about a fifteen hundred can growth and attrition rate. So we got to replace broken cans, buy new cans as, as more ser, as more customers come online. That's about another two point two seven million dollars a year in operating costs. So that, I believe that, based on our current, on our current format, we would have, we would have the costs there to, to operate at the, at the, at the current, at current garbage rates and provide an automatic sideload service to each household. There'll be several things that we'll have to, to take into account as we go. This is by far the most labor intensive option that we have versus contract, because we would have to, we have to go through every, we have to go through every, all these options and establish these things ourselves instead of a contractor doing it. And so this is, this is the most labor intensive option, but, I mean, so. I think that, I think that financially it is, it is doable, it's a service that will pay for itself without us having to raise rates, but like I said, there's, there's, there are the negatives of, of the, the labor intensive process and the, the changeover process to get that done. We have until, have until April first to be ready to go. The can supplier that we spoke with, they'll deliver the cans to the houses, and they can have them being delivered in February. The trucks, we will have to lease eight trucks utilizing the Sourcewell bid list, cooperative bid agreement. We can lease eight sideload trucks because we can't have all of our trucks in place. I have found two trucks that are available for purchase that we can get in January that would be ours. We've spoken to other counties who, who do a kind of a, a rotation, a cycle rotation, and there's a couple of trucks that'll be available April, May timeframe, that we could purchase that would be used, that would put us in four trucks by May of our own. We, we need about eleven trucks total to be able to operate, and then, so we would have to lease the others until the trucks came in. I have found enough, enough slots for chassis construction in first quarter that we can have the, we should be able to have the remainder of the trucks necessary by July, August timeframe. So we'd be leasing trucks from March to July or August, so. It is a doable timeframe, it will be a difficult timeframe, but it is doable. If we are to, if we're, if you choose to go contract, then it's still, we have, we have several things we have to address along that lines as well, so either option, county attorney and myself are going to be busy for the foreseeable future to make sure that we don't, we don't drop the ball come April one. So that's, and, because the last thing we want is, is garbage to be, people to expect garbage pickup and it not be there that, that week. So like I said, I, these are, these are our options. Ask me whatever questions you have, I, I'll give you the best answers that I, that I've been able to find. We can, I mean, I want to give you every opportunity to discuss, because this is a big decision. I mean, it's creating a, a sizable department that will have, will have sizable costs associated with it.
Our first question I got is an attorney question. Being as Mark has went over the rest of the agenda portions two through seven.
Yes.
We don't need to go over that because he is kind of went over it with, do I need to go through that again? Or has been, he has went through it, is that?
He needs to discuss each one of these.
Do I need to discuss?
Not in the work session, Chairman. I think we've kind of.
I know Mark has hit every one of them through there.
He did.
Before we got into the weeds of the discussion here, I just wanted to clear that up because, you know, I didn't want to, you know, because that's what we're fixing to do, we're fixing to discuss all these items, and I didn't want to, and I know Mark had read them all off and put it into public record, so I turned the meeting over to him, so he actually went through the agenda on that portion, so.
Yes, sir, it's a collective, a collective discussion was had.
Before we get started in all this discussion, I want to thank Steve Gatlin and CCS Garbage for the service they provided to the county. I know Steve reached out to us and said he was not going to rebid, and there has been a couple of companies that has come in and offered to look into doing this, but I just wanted to thank him publicly for his service, and he's going to run through the end of March, and I just, before we get into this, I want to thank him, and, you know, you know, it's, it's going to be a hard decision, it's a financial decision, but it, if, do you, you think it's doable?
I, I, I mean, either option is doable, but we have kind of, we've, we've, we've talked about this kind of on the outskirts for the last several months, so we've put a lot of thought into both options. Both options are doable, but they are, we're kind of at the, the deciding point. We either, we have to decide, we have to decide in whichever direction that we choose to go, contract or taking it in-house, we don't really have a, I mean, we have to proceed, and that's going to be the way we move forward as a county. So that, that's why, I mean, this is, this is an important conversation, I think, to be had.
Well, I, before we get started, I turn this over to Mark to let him look at our options, and him and attorney went through everything, and I'm going to let y'all ask all the questions y'all asked. Any discussion y'all have?
I appreciate the work that you've done on it, Mark, and Drew. Looks like, you know, we never did want to get into the garbage pickup business, but I don't know, as, as the county grows, you know, we can't, it looks like it's, it's an issue that we're going to have to deal with, but I, I don't know what counties I've talked to pretty well take care of their own, I don't know, but what we need to look at, don't need to look at that. I mean, seriously look into it, and, and y'all have already got us the figures and everything to go with, but we're behind the eight ball now, I mean, this is something should have been done.
This, this is something, I mean, for us to have a chance at doing it, we have to lease trucks. The cost of lease is expensive. It's about twice as expensive as owning the truck, so, but, so we want to limit that lease amount of time as much as we can, but the only way we can feasibly do it is to lease trucks.
Yes.
It's a month-to-month lease.
It's a month-to-month lease, so as we receive trucks, we can let that truck go that we have leased and replace it with our own. I mean, this is a process that it will take us, it will take us probably eight to nine months to work through everything until we have our own equipment in place. It may take us a little longer for a, a, of one last truck or two to arrive, but it's just a process that we have, that, that if we're to take it on, that we'll have to go through and really be diligent with our suppliers to make sure that everything is, is in place.
In other words, don't drag around no more.
Well, we're going to, we're going to, depending on how this goes, next week Drew and I are going to be very busy. Well, either, either way, Drew and I are going to be very busy next week. That's, that's where we are.
All right. Thank you.
So lease trucks are available, you don't foresee you getting a lease truck?
They have, we have already, they have already committed the trucks that, that we need, that they are available, that they can deliver them February, March timeframe.
So you've got us ten trucks?
We will, we will be able to purchase two trucks in January that are available that I've found, and then we have eight trucks that we would lease, and then as other trucks become available, whether it's the used trucks through adjacent county or the new trucks coming off the line, as they get delivered, we'll be able to turn trucks loose. So we'll, we'll start with our ten, but ultimately we want to build a fleet of eleven, plus, plus a, a kind of a, a small truck that would be kind of a multi-use, whether it's to go out and pick up where, to finish a small route or, or something, if something goes wrong, something breaks down.
Now, that's two extra trucks than the number of routes, that we, we think we can do it with eight routes.
We think we can do it, we think we can do it with, we think we can do it with nine routes, so that would give us a spare, and then ultimately we will have, we'll have the, a couple of other spares for growth, because we're, at the rate we're growing, we're growing at approximately a three percent increase in growth, so, I mean, around seven hundred, six hundred fifty, seven hundred houses per truck to be able to, to pick up, you're dealing with, I mean, it doesn't take long before that truck is, a truck has already been allotted to a new route when, when we're growing at the pace that we're growing at approximately three percent. I mean, so at some point, that growth will plateau, but we have to have a, we, we have to be able to handle at least the growth that we already have approved in subdivisions, and so it won't take us long to, to add another route in there to handle those homes, so. So ultimately, we're looking at purchasing, I think we'll have about twelve trucks, or eleven trucks in place with one small to, as a kind of a emergency, be able to handle it.[1800.63] So that's, that's on that side of the plan. Any of these logistics, if we go contract, any of these logistics are, would be up to the contractor.
Any more? That's all I have on it.
Anything on anything else?
I said, well, Mark, yes, and we talked about it yesterday on the figures and numbers, so.
Well, Don, you've been quiet, you got anything? I, I mean, you and I've talked a lot, I mean, we've, um, but we know that there's, that there's a, the options that are out there. We, we have to, we just, we're in a position where we have to make the decision, because again, that April, uh, that first week of April, people expect their, their trash to be picked up.
Either route we go, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be kind of a, you know, we had Steve, you know, like I said, what, thirty something years Steve's been doing the garbage round, I think? Okay, almost forty years, so either way we go.
And hadn't, hadn't had to think about it, have you, I mean?
We had to think about it, so now, you know, the citizens, you know, it's, it's gonna be a change, so I just hope everybody knows that, you know, it's gonna be some bumps in the road regardless of which route we go. So, but I thought, you've done a good job, Mark, I want you to know that, because you've done a lot of homework right here.
There's been a lot of homework, we've talked with a lot of people and, um, we have, and like I said, I talked with contractors, I mean, I've tried to, I've tried to fill out the contract side as well as I could to, to find reasonable options there and find out, because that's, I, I mean, like I said, that, there, there's a lot of work in getting a new, in getting a new contractor set up and in place too. Um, so trying to make sure that I feel, that, that we feel comfortable that they can do it, um, is, is, is important too, so. Um, like I say, that, that, I, I, I had, I had to talk more about if we went into the business because there's just a lot of, a lot more moving parts that we would have to deal with versus a contractor, but, um, but like I said, that's, that, it is an option. I do, uh, based on the conversations that we've had, they would, um, it's anticipated that there would be a request for an increase in payment. And so that's the, that's the, that's kind of the other side of that coin, um, that you guys have to take into account, so either decision's a difficult decision.
Are there any other counties or municipalities that you know of that still go through contractors?
There are a few, I think DeKalb County, um, they still have a contractor, um.
Chambers County just rebid there.
Yeah, Chambers County.
Chambers County, they just rebid there.
Yeah, Chambers County. There are more counties that, that do it in-house, but there are still a few that, that do it, uh, through contract. I, I think it's fairly prevalent up in Tennessee for contractors. Um, but I think in the state of Alabama, I think more counties do in-house garbage collection.
If I'm not mistaken, I think DeKalb County is the only one on the north side of the state that is a contract service. I mean, I, I know LaFayette County.
I've been looking a lot at, I, I used to drive around looking at everybody's bridges, now I've been looking at everybody's trash cans.
I have, I mean, and I never dreamed that we'd be dealing with this today. I mean, I was, I mean, this was a, you know, that was one of the things that, you know, I, I presume Steve would vote for, or take it forever, you know?
He's gonna live forever, isn't he?
I thought Steve was, Steve's, I've, I've, you know, and I just, you know, this was the last thing on the radar for, and it, you know, it just all of a sudden come on us and it's, like I said, it's a tough decision either way, gentlemen, and I mean, I'm, either way, it's gonna be some pains with it either way. I don't care which way we go, it's gonna be some pains.
And Steve's done good to keep our costs down on, on the service and I appreciate that too, but it's something we need to look at, is keep our price.
That's the main thing, we gotta try to keep our price down.
Down where we can, our, our constituents can live with it.
Yep.
And you know.
Cheap is not always good.
No. But you know, and that's one of the things, you know, we have had a lot of constituents reach out in the county wanting automated service and a can provided, you know, that's one of the services that we had to get a court request for a lot. And a lot of people know why we can't produce a can that other counties can, you know, and so, you know, that's, that's a cost there, you know, that's a lower, that's a million and one point, six million dollar cost or one point seven, you know, I mean, it's a, you know.
Yeah, just about cans surprised me, the, the cost of, to supply cans.
You know, the cost of, I mean, the cost of doing, it's, it's an expensive service, I mean, it's gonna be, uh.
For citizens, the rate for garbage collection is probably the best value they have in government.
Oh, yeah, because it's four, I mean, it's once every week, you know, you use a four time a month, you know, for, you know, really, for a few dollars a week, you get that service.
Five dollars, yeah, less than the price of a Starbucks coffee.
You like a pair of that Starbucks coffee? Bingo, when it was your.
Bingo.
But anyways, um, the, uh, you must go to Starbucks to drink coffee, don't you?
Uh-uh. I drink my senior coffee.
Senior coffee.
Bogangels, seventy-five cents.
You getting paid for that endorsement? You getting paid for that endorsement? No, the attorney says you're not.
That doesn't have to go in the record, no. But anyways, no, nothing about the funniest of it, I mean, the seriousest of it is, it is a hard decision either way, gentlemen, and one of the decisions, no matter which way we go, it's gonna, it's gonna have some issues with it either way. It's not gonna be a easy path, and either way, you know, so I mean, do y'all have any more discussion with it? All right, well, no more discussion, we'll move on to the, and I, being attorney says we're correct, we've, we've done been over all these issues, so we, we have one issue left on here and that's number eight. And that would be to approve to, um, sell a commercial lot, which is the partial number listed there, I'm not gonna read all that partial number, on Clyde Mayberry Drive to scout pest control, and that was what Bethany had spoke to us earlier about, and, um, so I just, any discussion with that? All right, we have no more discussion, we will recess for fifteen minutes, which ought to put us to forty-seven after, is that right? No, let me think if I can get any sleep, my glasses on.
Figure to the second?
Yeah, well, let us say we'll be back here fifteen minutes, how?
There you go.
We'll recess for fifteen minutes.